So before we start tonight, we're gonna actually start getting into work sessions for the board. It's important that the board gets together as a whole and has dialogue and conversation. And a lot of it needs to be done in public because that's the proper way to do it. Accordingly, if things have to be in executive session for the required issues that we can go in executive session for, which we have tonight, we will go in executive session for them. Usually it's contractual, employee matters, et cetera, stuff like that. So we still have a public hearing going in regards to the removal of fluoride from the village drinking water. So if there's anybody here new, they can go first. If there's anybody who has spoken before, you are more than welcome to get up at this time. Again, we will keep this open for a little longer. I think by the end of October, we'll probably bring it to a close and at least the public hearing portion. We've kept it open for a few months. We've heard pros and cons. And in talking with board members, you know, either we'll, I most likely see that we'll probably take no action and then bring it up at another time if we want, as we continue to fact find. No sense of keeping public hearing open for 12 months. But if we need, if we bring it up again, the board so wants to, we'll do the same process. We'll have a public hearing. We won't keep it open as long because we've heard a lot of information from residents. We've gotten a lot of information. And most recently, we got some information that I put in everybody's mailbox. It's also available at Village Hall. And also, we got some information from Dr. Kilner, who's local. He sent a nice email, and I think I forwarded it to everybody. If I didn't, I will forward it tomorrow morning. So anyway, anybody on fluoride?
I'll let somebody else go first. Anybody want to speak about fluoride?
I think you might be it.
I might be it?
Yeah.
The board, thanks for listening. I've made a suggestion in the past that, you know, we make, we make money on the water that we sell to the town. We charge them, I believe, 150% of the going rate. And it's always been a wonder to me why this village board does not take a portion of that 50%, and use it for an infrastructure fund. If this was done at the beginning of us selling water to the town, this would, this would not be a problem. We would just, we would just upgrade the fluoride situation at the water plant. Going forward, I think you should do the same thing. I mean, you should do that. You should have a reserve fund for the water infrastructure. We all know we need it. I think we all see the brown water. And this would not be a problem. It would be easily handled. I hope you're going forward, that you will take a certain percentage of the 50% that the town pays and above and beyond the regular water rates that the village residents pay, and use it for infrastructure fund. Also, I took a tour of the water plant. And the fluoride's in a separate room. And put a door on it. Put some, you have to invest. We're looking at this village board. We've given you, everybody's been polite. We're looking for a change from this village board, from the previous administration, which a lot of people didn't like. And it showed in the village board meetings. And I just think that we're looking for you to do the right thing for all the residents. Not, you know, not just cutting corners for projects, not spending money because you want to use the money for other projects. This is an important project for the village. I've attended all these fluoride meetings. Only two people have spoken about getting rid of the fluoride. And there's been quite a few village and town residents who have spoken about keeping it. And the village board, or the village residents, want to know if you's, if you're representing everybody? Or a certain viewpoint? Thanks for listening.
My, my concern about fluoride and I-
Mike, we know where you are, but if you could just say your name.
Michael Joyce, a member of the village. My concern about the fluoride, and I'm not gonna pretend I know anything about fluoride, except what I heard from, no. They put it in the water, it strengthens bones, gets rid of certain bacteria. That's all I know. My concern, well, I do applaud the board for trying to save money, especially with people on fixed incomes. But my concern is, you know, do in haste, regret at leisure. Because of the age of our filters, with the main water source coming in, they're, correct me if it's 50 or 70 years old, and this tree though. And there was a study done two years ago where-
Mike, this sound fluoride, right?
Yeah, 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 but there's a connection. Okay, what I'm afraid of, if you get rid of the fluoride, and the state of our main filters for the water coming in, now we're reducing another safety that was there that will not be there if you get rid of it. If that makes sense. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think we're done. Revolutionary Road in Holland Falls. Now fluoride, there's conflicting views about fluoride. What is the science? We shouldn't be following science. We shouldn't be following conjecture or feel-good theory. What is the science? You know, you have town, have you followed it? Does anybody know what the science is about fluoride? Is it good, is it bad? There's conflicting reports about it. Some say it's good, some say it's not good. Last I heard, it's not really good for children. Children and other people were trying to protect with it, actually their teeth and their health. So I would ask you to follow the science and not have a feel-good theory about it. All right, thank you.
Anybody else on the floor? Okay, before I move it to the property maintenance, I just wanna make a quick couple comments. The comment, "We make money from the town water," would be inaccurate. And some of the folks who are in this room, who have made comments tonight and before, have been at our budget meetings and has seen the budget for water. The outside user revenue balances our operational amounts and costs. So, you know, if you're sitting here telling me that I should raise as much money as I can out of the folks down in Fort Montgomery, I am sure that we will probably have an interesting and lively conversation from town board members. I don't think it's fair to say that what we charge them is a huge moneymaker. The difference is, is that it is a village asset, and the folks who are not village residents pay a little higher rate because there's other costs involved that we have put into that plan. So, you know, it's a board decision on how we raise the rates for outside users. And I don't disagree with you. And one of the things we're gonna talk about tonight is a capital assessment on everybody's water bill. Because while we've been going through this process, and I greatly appreciate some of the comments, you know, we have some stuff to do. And I don't think it's fair to say that this board isn't doing it. I mean, I think we've been able to accomplish a lot in the last four and a half, five months than I think we did getting bogged down at every single meeting because we had, we were, I'm not gonna say a terrorist, but we were terrorized at every meeting and got bogged down into nonsense. And thankfully, we're able to go and be adults at this table. We have great conversations. Even if we disagree, we have great conversations. So we're, like I said at the beginning, the purpose of this meeting tonight is to have a work session because I have a lot of stuff to talk to the board about. And it's stuff that we need to get done. And, you know, working on the water infrastructure, I don't, I appreciate when I hear a comment of what we need to do. But believe me when I tell you, I hear it every single day. So, and we're gonna, we are going to invest in that, into our assets. Because I think that's what the public demands, and that's what I keep hearing. So hopefully, the board has somewhat of that sentiment. But I'm telling you right now, we're gonna have to crack some eggs in order to make an omelet. So when we get to that portion, it'll be, like I said, a work session. So we had the public hearing on fluoride. And now I have some hearings concerning violation of property maintenance. Not really a public hearing. It's a, it's a notice of failure to remedy and notice of hearing. Sure?
So this past week, week and a half, I had an opportunity to ask a question to a few people in the department at county level.
Yeah.
And they actually, the main thing that I took from them, and anybody can talk to them, is when you're talking about fluoride, don't use sound bites that we've all been hearing. Talk in false sentences. And that was the main thing that they kept reiterating. She talked for probably at least 15 minutes on the radio station, which was pretty cool. So the message got out to everybody. And then I actually was on site with another gentleman from the health department as well, who talked about fluoride. So just use false sentences when we talk about fluoride, that's all.
And two other things. The fluoride actually gets added after the water goes through the filters. So I don't know, I'm not a fluoride expert in the sense of bacteria it treats in water, but I don't think it has anything to do with bacteria. But it is, the reason why we discussed it was we had some residents that brought it up. We had some board members that brought it up. And it is, I continually hear from other areas. I know I brought up Walden 50,000 times, but actually during this end of last week and the beginning of this week, I also found out that the village of Cornwall does not use it. They've never used it. So, you know, just like our third speaker said, don't come up and just shoot from the hip on this. You know, it's not something that goes, gets added to the water, then goes through the filter, and then comes to the faucet. It gets added after it goes through the filter. So just be careful when we're talking because, like you said, we gotta stick to the science. And unfortunately, on this particular topic, you can find 10 scientists that tell you it's great. You can find 10 scientists that say there might be issues. So that's what we've been going through the whole process. Every week, we get new information. We try to share it with the board accordingly. It's a tough call, but I'm glad we've been through the process. I just would appreciate if we try to keep the rhetoric down and just make statements that are factual. Because it's important that we stick to whatever facts we do have. So, so now I gotta talk about, unless any other board comments, we're gonna go to the notice of hearing. And then we're gonna, we're gonna have a public comment. We're gonna have a public comment section. So it's not over yet. All right. So I got hearings concerning violation of property maintenance and failure to remedy. We'll do 145 Main Street first. So take notice that you have failed to remedy conditions that exist in violations code of Village Holland Falls, Chapter 225, vehicles abandoned and junked. There exists on said premises, file violations. It should be unlawful for persons to store, deposit, or cause sufferer permit to store or deposit or abandon junked or inoperative motor vehicles or part of piece thereof in any private property within the village, except within a garage or other enclosed structure. Anybody here from 145? Really, I don't think we really get a chance to. Looks like everything was served. Return receipt. They signed for it. This goes back from August. Nobody? 145? Okay. Moving on to 6 Eagle Valley Road. 6 Eagle Valley Road, Holland Falls. Take notice you have failed to remedy conditions that exist in violations of code of Village Holland Falls, Chapter 170, Property Maintenance Code, 170-1, detrimental growth prohibited. No person shall permit rubbish, noxious weeds, long grass, or other rank growths, or growths which are harmful, poisonous, or detrimental to the health on real property owned by him or sidewalks adjacent thereon to. Upon due notice by the village, given to such owner to cut, trim, or remove such rubbish, noxious weeds, long grass, or rank growths. And upon default thereafter being made by such owner, the Board of Trustees may cause said rubbish, noxious weeds, again, long grass, or rank growth to be cut, trimmed, or and removed, or otherwise eliminated, and assesses and expenses upon the property wherein the same is found. Such charge, if unpaid, shall become a lien upon the property, subject to collection as a tax after due notice to the owner and a hearing as to the justness of the cost. So looks like the same thing. Homeowner had notice back in August. These are moving a lot quicker now. I know trustee Olivia and I met with the town in hopes that they would continue to move quicker with property maintenance. So I guess a month and a half isn't that bad.
What is rank growth?
I'm not sure what rank growth is, but it sounds pretty bad. Well, that's when an attorney's for to say it three times, and you could've just said it once. So 6 Eagle Valley Road, anybody? Going once, going twice? Okay, last is 15 Muller Ave. 15 Muller Avenue, Holland Falls, New York, 10928. Take notice that you have failed to remedy conditions that exist in the violations code of the Village Holland Falls. Same as before, Chapter 170, Property Maintenance Code, 170-1, detrimental growth prohibited. I don't think anybody needs me to hear rubbish, noxious weeds, long grass, or rank growth again. So no person shall be, shall permit rubbish, noxious weeds, long grass, or other rank growths, or growths which are harmful, poisonous, or detrimental to the health on real property owned by him or sidewalks adjacent thereon to. Upon notice by the village, given to such homeowner to cut everything. If they don't, such charge, if unpaid, shall become a lien upon the property, subject to collection as a tax after due notice to the owner and hearing as to the justness of the cost. So they're hereby, both of the, all three of these are hereby to remedy, they can apply for immediately. So again, return receipt, paperwork, notice on door, et cetera, et cetera. Anybody for 15 Muller Ave? No? Okay. So we'll get to those resi, I think res is in later. Yeah. Okay, public comment, anything? Yes, sir.
Just, just to clarify something. Again, I'm no expert on fluoride, and I stated that. And I wasn't talking about whether it goes in before the main filters or after the main filters. But I am concerned about the filters because I think our old engineers said to revamp them, it would cost $300,000 a piece. And has any work being done on them? So we're still in arrears as to that report that was done two years ago? Yeah, no, yes. That's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Uli, come on.
I'm machine, Lee. Trying to do a imperial, everyone's about fluoride. My father had no cheese. He was born in 1911. My mouth was full of lead. They changed it, but it still started with lead. And we got fluoride in our water when my sons were about six years old. And they're 57 and 55. They had not one cavity. I think that's coincidence. It's terrible. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll see. Sure. That's Ron Alcat. I looked on the OSHA website, and there's, they have nothing about fluoride in OSHA. And if the, the workers at BRI are concerned, you can call OSHA. See what, make a complaint. I'd just like to also say that I don't know where this fluoride issue came from. I hope it didn't originate out of the water plant. But I don't think any of those workers there live in the village or in the town. That's it. Again, thanks to your patience in listening to me. And I agree with you, Mayor. It's all about the budget. It's all about how you budget the water. Thanks.
Anybody else? This is the chance for public comment. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Going once, twice? Okay. We have a couple bills and claims that we have to pay. Water, capital, and trust and agency. So total is $243,475.25, most of which is a portion of the bill that's submitted for the Little League Field, which we call Row Park. But it's for the Little League Field. So I need a motion. Second, if there's any discussion, that's fine. But in order to start the process, I need a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Gargulo. Seconded by-
Second.
Trustee Ramus. Discussion?
Yes, please. I have some questions.
Sure.
This one, that's for the Department of Treasury. Could you just explain this a little bit? It's got the, the payment period here. It's done every, twice a month?
Yeah.
I'm just curious what the process on that portion is.
It's paid for employee, I believe, taxes, federal taxes. And the unedited reason is that basically it was a mistake. And so we're paying it late.
Okay, so this is the taxes that are paid for out of like the payroll, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So this whole bill is for it being late?
No, no, there's a portion of it. A portion of it is the-
A penalty?
Yeah, which we tried to get removed, but, you know, it's the IRS, so.
Okay. So is this in conjunction with the transfer from our payroll to paychecks?
No, nothing to do with it.
This was something separate?
Yeah.
Okay. So the total cost on that one that was the penalty was $3,953. So that one will be a big boo-boo. Wherever that came from, that's-
Yeah, look, we're short-staffed downstairs.
Yeah, I know.
And while I don't want to pay a $3,000 bill to hire another person at $40,000 plus benefits at $80,000, yeah, you know, I am short downstairs. I had to close Friday because I had two people away at training. One person had a family emergency, and I can't leave one person there. So, you know.
Understood. Mistakes happen, but that was a big one.
And so we've come up with a way to not have that happen again.
Okay, that's good. It's cool tax at Bob Meadow, that one's fine. And the Little League Field, I had sent out a question. One of the items on here was a change order.
Yeah.
I did not hear back on what exactly that change order was. Do you have any more information?
Yeah, so the change order was, we had an issue with elevation from the drainage pipe at the, oh boy, if you're looking at the field, the right side, I'm not gonna get into north, south, east, or west. But if you're looking at the field and home plates in front of you, to the right side of it, we had, we had two major drainage areas that we put in that came in before. We spent $425,000, $50,000 on drainage that comes off of Merns into there, into the lake, into the, eventually into the brook. So the increased elevation in that area because there was a sewer line there. So we had to do a change order. We ended up doing less curb, which ends up being a $12,000 difference, even though the change order-
Because of a sewer line, did neighbors landscaping not fall 8-1-1 dig prior to the-
No, 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 the sewer line's there. It's not, it wasn't that they ripped up the, it wasn't that they, the sewer line just happens to be there. It's the sewer main. So-
Well, that's what 8-1-dig is. Before you start a project, if there's any excavation of any kind, they'll come and map out all of your utilities.
Yeah, it's not, it wasn't a question of digging. It's a question of how high the elevation would be on a small little curb. So instead, they put up a little, small retaining wall, which, when I spoke to the engineer, absolutely made sense. And so we're gonna save on so much in curb, it's gonna end up being like a $12,000 swing, even though the change order was for 23-
Okay, the change order, yeah, is for $23,700.
And it's still within, we're still within budget.
Okay. But there were several other line items on this statement that were above the contracted price?
Right.
So were those additional change orders, and what was the purpose of those?
So I'm meeting with Todd tomorrow to get some clarification on some of your questions, which is why I'm only paying half.
Okay. So for clarification, if we're approving this bill for payment tonight, that would exclude any and all of the change orders and overages on this bill?
I'm paying half of the bill they submitted.
Okay, so the half that's not getting paid is for overages that need more discussion?
However you want to slice it.
Okay. Like that, because there's $85,000 worth in overages on this bill. So.
Yeah.
We'll slice it like that.
Which is why I'm paying that.
Okay. That's all. Any other questions, Elton, or Ben?
Okay, everybody okay? All in favor? Yes?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Can I come to tomorrow's meeting?
Yeah, he's gonna end up emailing me. We just ran out of time today. On my little section, I'm gonna talk, we've been locked in with FEMA a little bit, so.
Okay.
Which is good, good, good stuff. Okay, so resolutions concerning the violation of property maintenance. I got 145 Main Street, 6 Eagle Valley Road, and 15 Muller Avenue. 145 Main Street is Section Block 105, Section 105, Block 8, Lot 6. 6 Eagle Valley Road is Section 102, Block 7, Lot 10. 15 Muller Avenue is Section 103, Block 18, Lot 1. All in Holland Falls, New York. Whereas longstanding violations of the Village Property Maintenance Law, Chapter 170 of the Village of Holland Falls Code, have existed at each property listed above, designated as tax map as noted above. Whereas the property owners have been given due notice of said violations and have been directed to correct the violations. Whereas the property owners were given due notice of the public hearing to be held by the Board of Trustees on September, I think it's hearing, but that's okay. September 23rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM, to determine whether the violations have been properly remedied and whether to order the corrective action be undertaken by village to correct said violations of property owners' costs and expense, to bill said costs and expense to the property owner, and to levy the same against the property. And whereas a public hearing was duly held by the Board of Trustees, September 23rd, 2025. And whereas the owners did not appear, and whereas the owners have not taken steps to correct the violations, and the violations still exist. And whereas the Board of Trustees is authorized pursuant to Section 170-2 of the Property Maintenance Law to authorize the village to undertake remedy such violations at the property owner's expense, cost, and expense. Now therefore be it resolved that the village, its contractor- Now therefore be it resolved that the Village, its contractors or agents shall enter upon the property to correct the unforeseen violations and that all costs incurred by the Village, including administrative, legal and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner and such charge be added to the tax bill of the property owner if not paid within 30 days of the notification to the last known address of the property owner as shown on the Village tax writers, excuse me, Village tax records dated September 23, 2025. A motion was made by?
Motion.
Trustee Ramus and seconded by trustee Gargulo. Roll call.
Trustee Ramus?
Yay.
Trustee Olivia?
Yay.
Trustee Gargulo?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo?
Yes. Um, we have some recommendations from the street department to surplus some vehicles and, and things that are not being used. So ones of 2013 Ford F-550 dump truck, VIN ending 7168, a 1998 International Dump Truck, AKA the Hook Truck, VIN ending 5842, and this also includes three 12-foot containers. And number three, a Boss Smart Shield 10-foot Steel VDXT Snow Plow, serial number ending 7598. So I need a motion. Second.
These are just not in working order or not in use?
The 2004 Dump Truck is shot. It's just, they won't even use it to plow. The 1998 International Dump Truck does not start and cannot start and is time for it to go. It has served its purpose for the Village residents, I will tell you that. And the Boss Smart Shield Plow is one we don't use. We were using it at the beginning. It was ripping up the manhole covers, most notably on Lake Street, which we got some calls on. So it just doesn't have the ability to put the rubber on the bottom. And it's basically new and I think we'll get good top dollar for it.
So when this call, will the report come back at what?
Absolutely. Yeah, it'll all go to the company we have that does auction stuff. And, uh, you know, they set the bid, they set the auction bid and the minimums and all that stuff. We do usually very well, so. Uh, so I need a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Gargulo.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Elena Olivia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We have a request to approve the 2025 Orange County Household Hazardous Waste Event sponsored by the Orange County DPW, Division of EFNS, Orange County Sheriff's Office, Paint Care and County Executive Steve Newhouse, co-sponsored by the New York State DEC at Municipal Lot Number 2 on Saturday, October 25, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, pending certificate of insurance. We've spoken with, I've gotten about 48 emails, um, on this particular thing. And, uh, it's going to be great. Uh, I don't think we've, I don't know that we've ever had one. Maybe we, we did and I don't remember. But instead of some of these items winding up on the side of the road or in the trash where they shouldn't, um, I think this will be a good event. And kudos to the Town of Highlands Sanitation Department and Town of Highlands, uh, DPW or Street Department, or Highway Department. And Robert Gray, who's the Deputy Commissioner, who I've spoken to quite at length about this. Everyone's very excited to do it here. So I think it'll be a good day. So only thing we're waiting for is a certificate of insurance, which we'll get, you know, the county's self-insured, so we'll get something from them. But if you have any questions, there's a lot of info in there, so. And they, and they have a list, which we will get out online. It's everything from oil and latex, water-based latex and water-based paints, fluorescent bulbs, smoke detectors, medical sharps. It, it's, there's a lot on here. Engine degreasers, kerosene fire extinguishers, mercury thermostats, rechargeable NICD batteries, auto and tractor batteries, transmission fluids, motor oil, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll get that up on the website, on the Facebook page and all that. I just need a motion and a second to approve. Motion by trustee Gargulo, seconded by trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can we make sure that goes up on the board too? On the electronic board when those events are coming up?
Yeah, yeah, yes, 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 yes. Uh, the next thing we have is a request for the Fall Foliage Festival, which is actually Saturday. Yeah. So the first one is to approve the annual, the 32nd Annual Fall Foliage sponsored by the Town of Highlands Ambulance, Town of Highlands Volunteer Ambulance Corps on Main Street, Saturday, September 27, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Setup starts at 6:00 AM and ends at 5:00, so it sounds like they need it from 6 to 5:00. So I think we'll do that portion first. And then there's a request, and then there's a DJ. So let's do at least the event first. I need a motion and a second to approve the event.
Motion to approve the event.
Seconded by trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. The second request is for approved DJ Red Bottom at the 32nd Annual Fall Foliage Event. I'll move that. I need a second.
Second.
I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll, I'll take my motion away and I'll give it to you guys. Motion by trustee Olivia and seconded by trustee Gargulo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then the second request is, or third, I should say, is to approve spray painting small numbers on curb for vendor spaces at the 32nd Annual Fall Foliage Festival. I know when they originally asked this, when we put the sidewalks in a few years ago, we kind of were a little hesitant, but I don't know what you... I know it's easier for them. I understand that. So whatever you guys want to do, I, I don't have a...
I like latex paint.
Well, at least we can get rid of it.
That's what I'm saying.
If they have extra. Thank you for getting that. So, um...
I've put down the tape there, so I'm to paint it.
Okay. Okay, I just need a motion and a second.
A permanent paint or a latex paint is the true question. What is the board thinking?
I mean, they do it every year. I don't know.
Yeah, I remember it being done every year. I don't think it's that big of a nuisance or, um, or anything.
But do, do we want to use latex this way? It'll kind of wash off eventually. And then, because if they do it every year, as long as they use latex, then we could...
Sure.
Can we do that? I mean, they didn't say what type of paint they wanted to use.
Uh, I don't know.
Do you want latex, Jimmy?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Latex paint.
So is that your motion?
Yes. I would like to give them permission to paint as long as they use latex. Paint.
Spray paint, I guess.
They could use, if they're making up the numbers, you know, wood roll or whatever.
Okay. Motion by trustee Ramus. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carried. The next thing on the agenda is a membership application for a Association of Defense Communities, right? So these, this is a, an association specifically for communities that are outside a military base. And it's $450, but there is a whole host of grant money that I don't think we've ever looked at and never even taken a shot at getting into that would almost be in conjunction with the base for stuff for us to do in the community. It's not for something for us to do and they get the money over the gate. It's here, it would be in the community. But it's linked to communities that are adjoining a military base. So I think for $450, if we get, I, I'm confident that we're going to get something because we, you know, it's, we're unique. We're unique in the sense that there's not a lot of these communities, so. For $450 bucks, I'm very positive that we will get some kind of infrastructure grant, which will be very good. So I'm highly recommending that we at least take a year to take a look and see what we get. And for $450, uh, I mean, if you look at some of the awards, it's insane. So, um, and maybe we can make a lot of this work for our community. So once I, we join, I will hook it up with our normal grant writers that we have and take a shot. I think it's worth the $450 bucks. So I just need a motion, second, to approve that.
I have a question. I'm looking at the answer. I think there's nothing. It has never been anything in the door. Is this going to be something that will...
I, I think that's why we have a good shot to, yeah. If you look at where the money's going, it's going to a lot of other communities and, you know, it's, we've just never done it. We've just never done it. So. And it came up, to join this came up in two places. It came up with a meeting at AOG and it also came up at a meeting that I had with our state representative. So Senator, actually just came up with a meeting I had with Senator Scoofus, so. I, I think it's $450 well spent.
Sometimes you got to spend money to meet them.
So I just need a motion. Second.
Motion?
Motion by trustee Olivia. Seconded by trustee Carol. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Next thing is to authorize Cenik Hudson to receive bids for the Village of Highland Falls Fencing and Gate Insulation Project, part of the Hudson River Valley Greenway Grant Scope of Work at the Highland Falls Preserve. As trustee Gargulo was on site the other day, I know trustee Olivia's been there, I know Mr. Ramus has been there, and I know Pete's had a bad fax, but he's going to get there soon. I've been by there half dozen times. There's a lot of work being done on the trailhead. This was something that started with the previous administration and we are pushing it forward and getting it done. So far, so good. And part of the grant that we got, which was over $60,000, some of this work has to go through us as we are the administrators for it in conjunction with Greenway. So what you have in front of you is an authorization to authorize Cenik Hudson to receive bids. Uh, and then I think we get, we get, we end up getting the bids too. So, uh, it's not like we're not going to ever see it again. So I just need a motion, a second, and a vote to authorize Cenik Hudson to receive bids for the Village of Highland Falls Fencing and Gate Insulation Project.
Make the motion.
Motion by trustee Ramus, seconded by Mayor DeSalvo. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You guys make me nervous when you, when you're all...
It scares me.
It's okay, I'm not going to beg, I'm not going to beg you to vote. If I don't hear anything, it's a yes. Okay, number 10, approve Highland Falls Fire Department Junior Member Ryder Rowan. Pending physical per the recommendation of the Fire Chief Eric Smith. Make a motion. We approve Ryder.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You all jumped in on that one. That was good. Okay. So 11, 12, 13 are discussion items that we're going to start doing. We've talked about Airbnb. We talked about a couple little zoning adjustments. Some are, you have tonight. You're going to get probably two others tomorrow. But it's for, it's to think about. I'd like to set a public hearing at some point. I'm hoping by the second meeting in October. It's adjustments to the law that we arguably went through the first time. It's adjustment to height. It's, it's looking at the commercial, the entire commercial floor. As I stated at a board meeting, I went and spoke with Alan Sorenson from the Orange County Department of Planning. And they actually have two buildings on Main, on, I don't know if it's Main Street. There's two buildings in Goshen that are exactly what I think we have been looking at the whole time we've gone, gone through this process. And it has the residential at the top, commercial on the bottom, and they have unique and interesting ways to do parking. One is on the bottom floor. There's parking, like a parking garage. And on the other building, uh, it's commercial in the front and then there's parking underneath, like, almost like an overhang. So the theory of the reduction in commercial space in order to add the potential for resident, residential or parking came in about, of discussions with the county. I think it makes sense to some degree for certain properties and where you can have, where it would require and make the adjustment. We started with numbers that we started with. This isn't Bible. It's for you all to digest, you know, digest it.
I think you got them in the wrong places.
Think what you got, what in the wrong places?
You're them, please.
That's okay. It's just, it's just to introduce to you guys tonight, not introduce the local law. Just think about it, make notes. We'll, we will discuss it again. We may have a special meeting on it, just to talk about the zoning and Airbnb. We'll probably have just a quick meeting, a special meeting on that. The only thing I want to say is that this isn't a gotcha type of situation, so don't think that it's just we're going to railroad it through or it's, we'll take our time. But I want to get it, I want to have these things done before the end of the year. So if you have questions, let's get them up front, let's get them answered, let's get them taken care of, and let's move forward. I, I am not, I, I am not turning this into the debacle it was the last time. So, uh, if we're going to, I'm going to shoot these out to the planning board as well. We'll get some feedback from them on, of course, on the one or two other items that I have that will probably kick out tomorrow, if not Thursday. And changing a couple other little items that have been brought up at, at meetings. So, um, I think it'll be a good thing, whatever we end up coming up with, whatever the numbers end up coming up with. I know that's probably bold, but, and we'll change it. It's just a starting point. It's just a starting point. And then once we kind of have it together, then we can bring it to the public and then we'll have that process. It's, and just so the public knows here tonight, the last time we adjusted the height for the building, we had all kinds of numbers being thrown around. We ended up at 48 feet. This would be bring it to 50. It would also clean up some language in regards to, um, any type of mechanicals on the roof, included, non-included. I've been in meetings where I said they're not included. I was in meetings that said they're included and I said, no, they're not, and this they are, no, they're not. We're cleaning up some of the language. We're making it right and, uh, that's that change. One of the changes, the reduction of commercial spaces, I said, to add potential residential and/or parking. If you're in a spot where you don't have a lot of parking, but you want to make more parking, you're still going to be held to the same requirements and we'll probably get some feedback from the planning board as well. Another item that we're going to probably address is a height in one of the other zones. You know, it's at 70 feet. I, when I talked to the county about it, because of the location of the property and the elevation, they said that may be why they did it that way. I don't know. We're going to try to fix that as well. Again, I'll get that kicked out to you, uh, before the end of the week. So a couple other little things, uh, that I think are kind of minor, but may make a bigger splash. And, um, while you're coming up with your suggestions or comments or questions, we'll also probably get some feedback from the planning board. But I don't want to reinvent the wheel because we did hear from them a couple times on a couple of these things anyway. So we'll try to dig up that information and, and kick it back out to the board anyway.
Um, you have a couple things being removed from the code in here. Section 240, 29, H1, mixed-use development. You're deleting Subparagraph 14. Or suggesting to delete Subparagraph 14, which is, um, a, having a permit required for a home business. So if you were running like an office or, you know, a lawyer or a therapist out of your home, it requires a permit. So you're wanting to delete that, which permits bring us revenue. I don't know why you wouldn't...
Because it's in the B2 district. You're not going to have a home.
Well, if you're talking about putting apartments in the first floor of a mixed-use building, then those apartments would... building, then those apartments would have the potential to run a home-based business.
I think if we wanted a business on Main Street, we wanted a commercial spot on a third-floor apartment.
I agree, but deleting the clause would deregulate that situation.
No, which wouldn't be permitted use?
No, they just wouldn't need a permit for it.
But you couldn't do it. Can't just do it if there's no if there's no permit, it's not allowed.
We'll work on that. I understand what you're saying. We'll work on that.
On the first world, yeah.
Put them all down. Attorney's going to answer them and then that way we can, you know what I mean? That way it's not a...
Yeah. The other one to delete was 24032 in height was the entirety of section B, which was giving specific regulations to certain items that have the ability to go over the height already. So I think having items that have the ability to go over the height, there should still be those regulations on there.
Right. But I think it gets cleared up in the rest of the law.
Okay.
And maybe when we actually put the nothing books together on that, we can require the certain entities, most of them, except for what depends on policy, have to be set back from the edge of the building so you can't see. So something that we could discuss.
Yeah. One of the items was advertising on here too. So it was regulating what type of advertising could be, you know, put on the building. I could see that very easily just becoming super cluttered in our, you know, higher areas with too much visual going on. And yeah, swap those other two numbers and we're good. I would like the this short-term rental thing I have going here, I would like to have the building inspector review this as well. I'd be curious what his opinion is because there's a lot of work from his department through this.
Sure.
So.
So this the the Airbnb short-term rental property is directly from the Village of Cornwall. And they just went through this whole craziness. If I knew you were coming, I would have moved to the meeting. This came from they went through a long, arduous process for Airbnb because they have an habitual problem as we do. So and they passed it. So I was waiting for them to pass in hopes that, you know, a lot of the lifting would have been done. So our attorney took it, made a few adjustments that are more primary for our community and, you know, but look it over and we got to tweak, we got to tweak. Again, that'll go to the...
It's a little intense, but I think it's a good place to start at least.
It's intense, but it's needed and I understand. And we're going to talk about the building department, not in a negative way, but, you know, it is what it is. It's a consolidated service and we have an issue and I got to deal with it and I need, you know, I need you to move along, get on the bus and we're going to, you know, keep going. So I just want you guys to have this, you know, I don't ever want to hear that, you know, you're not you're getting kept from information. So you have it. We're going to look at it and we're going to meet on the zoning and Airbnb together. So so you have it. All right?
As far as the purpose and intent, I think we're going to have to definitely work on that a little bit too. Because the Airbnbs, I mean, they're bought up by LLCs. People go on with these LLCs and they buy these up and it actually prevents new couples from actually purchasing these because they get outbid on these properties. It's not conducive to what we want here is family environment where kids can grow. And you can and I will get that intent as to more detailed language on it because I have seen it in some other municipalities as well.
Right. I would just make sure that when we talk about that type of stuff at these meetings, just remember that there is federal regulation about who can buy what who can buy homes. You can't, we cannot...
No, I understand. Anybody can buy a home, but sometimes they're getting outbid, especially if they know they can come in with that.
Unfortunately, that is the process. I don't like it any more than you do, but thankfully, and a couple of things I'm going to say...
Well, the short-term rental and the fees, annual fees, the fines if they don't register, all this is going to compound on it. So, you know, there it is. You're played by the rules and then so be it. And hopefully that will help generate some revenue that because this is going to be a big thing on the building department.
Yeah.
And they may need a person dedicated to this.
Yep, they might.
So, you know, it's a it's a big process.
Yep. And, you know, keep in mind too, while we're going through this process, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, but you do have people who live here and own other homes and Airbnb them. So I, you know, I can't make a law that just goes after the LLCs and not property owners that live in the community.
No, I'm not saying that either.
No, and I'm not saying you are. So just keep that in mind as you cultivate and look at these potential new laws. And again, we're going to kick it to the planning board, hopefully get some information from them and some feedback on the Airbnb at least anyway, because that is new. But it's something that keeps coming up. It's something that we keep talking about and we're not going to kick the can down the road. We're going to address it. So we're going to address it now with this board because it's running so well. Next thing is discussion...
I will say I do have to, as a real estate agent, I do have to abstain from any conversation of who can and who can't because there are very strict rules.
Sure. Yeah. Okay. You may want to just touch base with the attorney and if you're going to exclude yourself, you might not even come to any of the meetings.
Yeah.
Okay. The next thing I have you guys all look at is a schedule of fees for the village. We adjusted these, I don't know when. And I might be confusing it with certain ticket fees that the police put out, but some of these fees haven't been touched in decades. So and I also want to add one because I in the last two weeks, I've gotten a call for dumpster permits, which I don't know if the town issues them, but I don't, you know, if they do or they don't, that's fine. But I think we should we should have a permit V2 for that because usually they're on our village roads or they damage a sidewalk or they put an indentation in a road or whatever. You know, there's a cost to fix that. So just check these over. We're doing some homework too, but I want you guys you all to have them as well. I already came up with a couple of proposals. Some of them are kind of crazy ridiculous, like a blasting permit for $100 or boat recovery, which I didn't even know we had. But I want to add at least those container permit and come up with a fee. I'm just going to check with some other municipalities. Again, if you want to, whatever homework you want to do, I know...
The town does charge a dumpster fee.
Yes, that's fine.
And it's all dependent on the property, dependent on the amount of garbage, that sort of thing. So it's mainly the commercial buildings where the local...
Right, correct.
So I'd be curious what exactly your intention is and what types of...
If it's on a if it's on a village road, then I want a fee.
So is it...
A roll-off or a dumpster?
I'm talking about roll-offs.
There's a whole fee schedule for the town and it's different size dumpsters are different...
Not for normal garbage. I'm talking like if someone rolls up a dumpster to do a commercial job or if they're if they're emptying out a house.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, for sure.
If it's going on a municipal road, we should get a fee.
Yes.
And I think the town already addresses that.
Okay.
You were concerned about, I think.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
You know what I mean?
Yes. Thank you.
Because I got literally two or three calls in the last two weeks and I'm like, I don't want to charge it. There's no fee.
Yeah, the big dumpsters for commercial use, they very much so leave divots in the white top and...
Yeah. So if I got to buy cut it out, buy patcher, I want I want that covered. So whatever it is. So take a look at that and and we will revisit it, but it we're it's going to get changed and updated. Really not changed, it's updated.
Yeah, there isn't a fee now for that, right?
No, there's no fee yet. So and I was talking to trustee Ramus and we were talking about water service charge fees, water additional sum, sewer hookups. I mean, like some of the numbers are just silly. I mean, on the outside, we're, you know, it's it just needs to be updated. So a couple of quick things that we talked about. This is just updates for the board. I spoke with trustee Olivia. We got together, actually she did 99.9% of the work. She went and got all the poles that have bases that are washed out, holes getting infiltrated, not good. I don't have any of them on there. It must have been 40 on there.
Yeah, and that wasn't even the entirety of the village.
Right. So I sent them out to our point of contact at ONR. She's she submitted it to her into for a work order, so that will is in the process getting done. I'm just waiting for an update. Something for the board also to think about as we move into next year for the street sweeper. Trustee Garjula brought it up and it makes sense, us to think about alternate side street parking when we're using the street sweeper. Just keep it in your head. Schedule fees we talked about. After we surplus the vehicles for for DPW, I was with the DPW for the last two days just in the morning, just going down there. And we're trying to get together a price for a truck, right? So many moons ago, when we did plowing, we had two big internationals. I don't know if you all remember them. And we when we changed the fleet, we actually had a few more people down there at that time. We were able to not use bigger those bigger international dump trucks unless there's another term for them. So what we want to do is is after we surplus the older Ford, from what I'm hearing from everybody that does the plowing, and we could discuss this more, is that they seem like in the smaller dump trucks that they continually are going back and forth to get salt. But the other truck that we have down there, which is a Chevy 6500, Termax, they have they use it on one side of the community, the south side or north side, whichever whichever side they have that truck. And they're able to do more salting and not have to go back. It's not so bad during smaller storms, but when it's a bigger storm, it becomes an issue. So we have money that we have put aside in reserve for this for a purchase that size. But it's just, again, keeping in your mind, and then once we get, it's basically the same truck that we have down there. The town just bought one, which is similar to the one we have. And I think with everything, solder, sander, plow, blah, 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 et cetera, it was like 120. So my my thought process is is that in speaking with the folks down at DPW after we and trustee Garjula, after we get the money from what we surplus tonight, we roughly thought we would probably anticipate about 30 grand, give or take, that will help offset that cost of that truck. So just keep in your mind right now, we're just talking about it right now. We're, you know, we're it is what it is. We don't even know if one's available. It may take a couple of months to get, so it's nothing that's happened right tonight. I just want you to have it in your mind. FEMA update. So for the longest time, we really didn't have anything to update about FEMA because we weren't getting anywhere with FEMA. So between nonsense that was mentioned to FEMA and duplication and triplication of paperwork that we had already submitted and then an election and then for a while there, every time we were emailing FEMA, we got a new a person would respond. If they did respond, we got a new person. Like so for the first week when we sent, we got a response from Jimmy Ramus, who works at FEMA. And then we sent an email two or three weeks later and then we got an email from Mr. Carroll. Hey, I'm the new person. And then after that, we sent it and we got another one from trustee, you know, like, I don't, Ms. Garjula. And it just kept on changing. So that was a disaster. I met with Congressman Ryan's office and I met with Senator Scoofus's office because we kept on hearing, well, it's not really, there's two agencies, right? So FEMA sends the check from the federal government to the state and the state distributes. So FEMA sends it to Dishes and Dishes sends it to us. I don't know the acronym. I just know what is Dishes, Department of Home, whatever it is. So so when I met with them, they said, well, one's holding up the other, actually from FEMA, when we were getting it from the representatives that were working there, we're saying, well, the state's holding it up. And then we spoke to the folks at the state, they said the federal government's holding it up. So I was at the end of my rope because we tried to give everybody enough time and it got I got to the point where I ran out of patience, which sometimes takes a while. And I met with Congressman Ryan's office. We did it a Zoom or a Teams meeting. And it was all it was all good information and it was good feedback and we had good dialogue. And I basically said, I this was my exact comment, I said, listen, guys, I'm, I said, listen, folks, I said, I'm playing poker cards faced up. I said, I am not, this is not a threat. Don't take it as that. I said, but if I don't get some answers, my board and I are going public and we're just going to start calling on every news agency I can. It's not a threat. It's just that I have millions of dollars worth of stuff to do and I'm not getting anything from you guys. I'm not even getting hello, how are you? So I think they understood that. And then I had a meeting with Senator Scoofus's office and I said, I said, look, I said, same kind of line, I said, I'm playing poker faced up. I said, I'm only holding a pair of fours, so I need you guys to figure out what the problem is. And I heard that, well, Dishes is saying that it's a congressional approval of money and I'm hearing from Congressman Ryan's office that it there is no such approval. It's already approved as part of the budget. I said to them, I don't really care at this point. I said, it's the United States of America. We're the Village of Highland Falls. Start sending us money. So luckily, in the last two weeks, we had a meeting with FEMA and we got a whole new team, a nice team and a great folks. We had a great meeting the other day. We've already got approved for some money for Clydes Avenue. I'm approving something tomorrow for, I think, Myron's. So it's it's we're like like we never missed a beat. Like it wasn't like eight months that went by and we were waiting and listening and nonsense. Now, we had money in the bank from from dealing. That's why we're able to continue with the projects we're continuing with. But we were getting to the point where, you know, we needed to we needed to get reimbursed. We needed to get that money coming back. So thankfully, that's starting to happen and I'm very happy to report that. In addition to that, as I stated before, the board needs to seriously start to think about two things in regards to water. And well, I'll make a quick comment about water. So I in in looking into the fluoride issue and making calls, I spoke to the Village of Cornwall. Nice operator up there and the Village of Cornwall does not use fluoride. Now, I don't know if the residents know that up there and I don't want to create a stir, but they've never used it. And I don't think the teeth are flopping out of everyone's mouth at Cornwall. I'm not saying I'm just saying that because it's kind of funny, but but as I as was mentioned, follow the science, you know? What may have been 60 years ago, 70, 80 years ago, we do differently now. So I'm not neither here nor there. But they are they don't use it, number one. And number two, they hired a company and I'm just telling you this the board this information because it's good to get out, it's good for the public to hear it, it's good for you guys to hear it. Cornwall's spending $49,000 with a company to come in and look at everything, A to Z, operations, the plant, what they spend, what they charge, what debt they have. They do have debt, so they have debt that they put in capital improvements for, what they charge the town outside, very similar to us. They charge the town outside just like we do. Everything, they're spending $50,000 to have a whole report done. I said, wow, 50, you're spending $50,000 for that. And so they're going to share that they're going to share that that company with with me and I'm actually to call Village Hall. I'm just I'm just curious. Like I don't I don't even know what their plant size is. I don't know what they put out. I don't know what their budget is. And so I'm going to call up to the mayor up there, who I know, Jim, and he is a great guy, and I'm going to get some more information from him.
That's just for the water?
Just for the water. It's it's all it is is a study to see if and and part of the study is is what they're charging is marketable, is it in the market rate, is it, you know, I don't know what they use to to gather that information and come up with a result, but I wouldn't suggest spending $50,000 on a study because I would rather say I'd rather if we could raise $50,000 for a study, I said, I would rather just take the 50,000, you know, every and use that towards capital improvement. That would be me. But what I've looked at from what the next thing I'm going to talk about is that we're probably looking at a $50 capital assessment, two water bills twice a year for a while. twice a year for a while. What's the while? Not sure. It's in your hands. You're the board. It's not up to me. It's not unilateral. But we have a dam to deal with, lower bog. We got a $2 million grant. I still have to, I have to get the money to use that to, to fix lower bog, which is a concern for us because it does hold water for us. I actually wanted to blow it up at one point, but apparently it holds several millions of gallons of water and it will help us during drought time. I figured it was, be a cool thing for like the demolition crew at West Point, just blow it up and because we have the main one, but we do need it. Uh, the, our engineer, my engineer said we did need it. So I took his advice. I followed the science. And, um, so I need the $2 million for that grant and I'd seriously like to talk about the, the, what I'm going to call the Cragston Water Project because those folks that did the previous water project, uh, are holding their price that they gave us for the whole package that we broke up in two parts. We broke up like an A and a B. Um, and I, keep it in your mind because we're going to talk about it again in the first meeting of October. But it's $2 million grant we got. So whatever money we would borrow, that at least $2 million is going to come back. I think we have to cover 20% of it, which would be, uh, 20% of 200K, I mean, two, 2 million. Um, and then the water project in Cragston, I'd say Cragston, but it's more than Cragston, uh, was roughly 2.4, 2.5. So I don't think we need to borrow the full 2 million for the, for the, um, for the dam. I just have to check on one thing, on how the money gets reimbursed. I think we can spend and, and put in for it and get it back right away. Uh, it's not something we have to lay all out, then submit to get back. But, you know, these are the thing, these are some of the things we've been talking about. It's some of the things I get phone calls on and it's some of the criticisms we all hear. I don't care what party line you are. Um, but if we're going to do this stuff and we at least have to do the dam.
That's a top priority.
It's, both of them are top priorities because I, we all get complaints about.
Understood, but the dam.
About distribution, not the qual, not necessarily the quality in the water coming out. It's the distribution. It's the older pipes in the ground. So.
The integrity of the dam.
Of lower bog. So, and it's, it's also, you know, we had a, a meeting today with our insurance carrier. It's on their radar too. We're fine because we're doing stuff and they're okay with it. Um, but I, I would probably venture to say, you know, um, three and a half, 3.75 million. That would cover the water project and for, and again, I'm calling it the Cragston Water Project. And also it would cover roughly a million bucks to start the dam work pending how we get the money back. If we didn't have to do the dam, I would say it's, it would be a complete no-brainer. If they're, they're holding a price for us that we, that if we, we're deciding to do it in a year or three years from now. And I know the timing is terrible because we're still dealing with FEMA project and we're still dealing from the flood. I understand that. But the rate we just got from a refi, from refinancing the short-term debt to the full-time, to the long-term debt, we got 2.65%. That is fantastic. That means the folks who get, who said, yes, make it a long-term bond for the village of Highland Falls, looked at all our stuff and said, hey, they're, they're doing good. And that's why we're going to give them a great rate. So we had budgeted for, I think, three and a half or four. So we came well under, uh, where, where I wanted to be. So that was, it was great news. So I want to continue that. And if we anticipate some of these other things, you know, these costs for these projects do not go down. And the fact that that company is holding that cost, you know, maybe, I, I asked our engineer to kind of put a value on it. I don't, you know, I don't want to say anything out of turn, but even if it's a hundred thousand or $200,000 difference, it's worth it. Um, and the cost of $50, from what I'm looking at for the, on the bills, yeah, it's going to be a little pain. But I think at the end of the day, if we continue to, to put that money specifically for infrastructure stuff, um, I think the residents, they might not all like it, but they'll appreciate what we're doing. And I think if we explain it to them and show them, and if you guys don't want to do it, that's fine. That's fine if the board doesn't want to do it. Because like I said, it's a vote.
So the, the assessment, if you can just reiterate.
I would say probably $50.
No, 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 no. I got that. I got that. It's not going to increase your sewer.
No, 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 not this.
That's what we really need to let everybody know.
No. No. Uh, it would be $50 a bill. It would say capital assess, a capital improvement assessment. Um, I'm looking at $50 a bill, maybe a hundred dollars a year total. Uh, it would roughly generate, there's 1,187 users, you know, multiply that by a hundred bucks, 119,000, I, I believe from first look at, second look at, would cover the extra debt. Because like I said, if, if we do 3.75 or 4 million, half, a little less than half of that is going away because we got a grant.
How many users?
1,187 bills go out. So.
Did the company say how long they're willing to hold that price for?
They said November, December. After that, they may have to, you know, they would relook at it. So I, I said, I, I felt from what I, my conversation with the engineers, if I could give them the firm that, you know, it was, it looked like I, we had support that we were going to move forward with it, that I think they'd be amenable to that. But I can't, I can't tell them like, you know, I'm, I'll hold it for six more months. I mean, they got, you know, I, I would imagine as a business, they're in the business of trying to make a profit, which I understand. Um, and if, if we plan on waiting six months for that, you know, I, I don't know. Is it prudent? We can all be heroes down the road if we are, but if we're wrong, then it's just going to cost more. Um, and the only thing I have to check is, is how, if we could do the, um, the $50, um, midstream or we'd wait till beginning of the new fiscal year. Even if we authorized, and even if we authorized the borrowing, went out and borrowed, it still takes a year for us to pay it. We don't start paying for a year. That's the good part. So, um, and I, pending on the schedule for the dam, we're still in the process of getting the engineer, doing the report, them communicating with DEC, DEC coming on board. DEC is going to want us to spend $10 million up there. We're going to tell them you're crazy. They have to do a negotiation. They have to come down to where basically 2 million, I hope 1.5, 1.8, whatever we don't have to cover and fix, what we got to fix up there. Uh, so that process, six months, eight months, 10 months, and then the actual kicking in for the work. Um, so that, that's the good part. We, and, and if I'm figuring this right on how we pull cash, uh, that's why I wouldn't say, don't, don't, we don't have to necessarily go borrow 2.6 and 2 million and it's 4.6 million. Uh, I think, I think we can cut it back based on how we get reimbursed. I'm just, I'm verifying that and verifying, um, how long they'll hold that price for. But I, I want you guys all think about it and it's, like, I get it and I, I already know there's one or two folks in the room that are going to stand up and say, you know, the seniors and the children and all this other stuff and, 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 you know, and, and everyone's going to feel it. So if the assessment's on village residents, it's going to be on town residents as well, part of that billing process. Um, so, you know, as I, as I've mentioned to the board, you know, tonight we had to pay a $43,000 school tax bill on our, on our reservoir. And, you know, I've spoken to the board and, and they're in process of trying to negotiate us to come up with a way to not have to deal with that. But also part of our billing is that I'm going, and I was straight with the board, with some of the members at the school board, we are going to figure out on how to bill that that cost gets absorbed. I can't go to the residents every single time for every little single thing. I have an understanding with them, with the residents to explain to them, I'm, I'm asking you for $50 more in your bill to go into infrastructure. I don't want it to go to pay tax. So if I have to figure out, and I've mentioned this to a couple of us, if I have to figure out how to create a billing method to cover that $44,000, we're going to come up with it. I don't want to, but, but, you know, that $44,000 can go towards another 100 meters that we also have to do. So just food for thought, that things that, you know, I kind of, it's, it's daily stuff that comes up, but it's important to share with you. So number one, you all hear it. Number two, the public gets to hear it. Number three, you get to think about it and we're going to discuss it. I mean, this is tough stuff. Um, but I think part of us all coming on the board was trying to be open and nurturing and discussing and this is part of it.
So it's a $50 per bill?
Yeah. So whatever your bill is, let's say you're, let's say your water bill, it's 13250 plus, you know, uh, another $20 for the other gallons you use. So your, your bill's 15250. The $50 would be 20250. That's just an example. And it, it would come, it would be separate on the bill so it doesn't affect your sewer.
I think it'd be more palatable to break that up.
Yeah, it's a hundred dollars I need a, a year. That's why I'm breaking it up 50 and 50. If you guys want to go lower than that, that's fine. But, you know, come budget time, we're going to have to make the money up somewhere to pay for this stuff.
I'm saying it's maybe something a little more palatable because that's going to be a rough nut because your family's six and you're using that water. But again.
Yeah, it's just a flat fee though. It's not a.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, $50 on top of your usage. Is that parcel the only one that we pay some tax on for the municipal locations?
I believe so. I believe so. Just food for thought. Okay? I know it's serious stuff. Sorry, guys. I, I, I know we all like to have a lot of laughs, but it can't all be on me and it can't all be on any one of us as individuals. It's board decisions and it's tough stuff. And I'm sharing it with you because it's important to the public and it's important to you guys as representatives. When I mean you guys, I mean you all in general. I don't mean to say guys, but, uh, just have that in your mind. If we're okay, I need a motion to go into executive session because we have some personnel issues to discuss.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's been asked a lot about the number of projects in the paving that went out and is it going to be food to start that project?
1,000%. Yep. Yeah. So it's in the paper this Thursday. By the end of October, we'll probably be paving.
We don't mention that. This zoning map just came in from the county and it's going to be posted on the county website, I believe, correct?
Yeah. So we, we did get the map from the, uh, actually, no, hold that. Let me give this to you. Uh, we did get an updated map from the county. We hope that it's correct. And they're, they're making some for us to drop to the town and to the, uh, to us, a, a, a bigger version, not, not the smaller version. And this was since the, this was since the last amendments that we did. It's not talking about anything we have to correct, anything more we have to correct or potentially correct. So.
This is the first local law that we text.
The 2025, yep.
Yep. So, yep, anybody wants, um, this should be posted on the county website, zoning map, um, probably by the end of the week. Uh, if not, give us a call and then we'll find out what's supposed to hold back.
And, and we're going to, as soon as I get the big one, we'll have one at Village Hall, we'll have one down at the town and we'll have one extra. So, okay? And if you guys are okay, I just need a motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
Discuss personnel. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you.